Here.
Commissioner Gill.
Here.
Commissioner Price.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
And Commissioner Smith.
Here.
I ask you all to join me in a flag salute and moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move next to the public forum, a time for citizens to speak on any issue not on the current agenda today. Is there anyone that would like to come forward?
Norman Mantle, Slanta, Kansas. I keep hearing commissioners saying they're mindful of trying to take care of spending in the county, but yet when you buy equipment, do you depend on staff to say that it's reliable? Riley County is not using videos anymore for court cases. Lawyers are finding errors in videos. So, the next time when video camera purchase requirement or request comes up, you better make sure the equipment is reliable.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, we'll move it on to regular business. Item number one.
It's RFA 188-15, Adoption of the Emergency Operations Plan. I have Hannah Stanball, Emergency Management Director, here.
Good morning, Hannah.
In your report.
Good morning, Commissioners. We came to you last week in a study session in regards to request for approval and adoption of our, the Saline County Emergency Operations Plan. The Emergency Management Office, along with our planning partners and with the local emergency planning committee, is requesting approval and adoption of the 2015 Saline County Emergency Operations Plan. One of the responsibility of Kansas counties is required by the SARA Title II and mandated by Kansas Statute 48-929, is the development and promulgation of a county emergency operations plan with the intention of saving lives and protecting property in the event of a major emergency or disaster. The Saline County Emergency Operations Plan is an all-hazards plan that addresses evacuations, sheltering, post-disaster response and recovery, deployment of resources, communications and warning systems, and much more. The Emergency Operations Plan also defines the responsibilities of counties departments and volunteer organizations. This plan has been developed over the past several years with input from many of our different stakeholders to ensure coordinated and organized management of any consequences arising from emergencies or disasters. This document has been developed as the guide for emergency operations within Saline County and will replace all previous emergency operations plan, or replace the plan that was developed in 2010. If adopted, this plan will be in effect for five years and will be up for renewal again into 2020. Your options are the approval of it, or the disapproval. Disapproval would require us to go back to our planning partners and create any changes or updates that are requested of the commission. Obviously, we do, do, would suggest approval. It's, the plan that we have in effect right now is no longer meeting the requirements. There's definitely some things that were updated with this last one that are a little bit more streamlined for our county operations, as well as additional information and the resources that we do have here. This is definitely, we have sent this plan already to the state of Kansas and we've received preliminary approval from them. We've met all the requirements that have been set forth by the state, and so the last step is final approval by the county itself. There is no budget impact whatsoever on the county for this. This was all developed through staff time, through our planning partners that we have throughout the county. So, subject to any of your questions.
Questions of staff? Is there?
County liability? I mean, is there any liabilities to the county on this one?
There's more of a liability not having one.
Okay.
Well, they've worked really hard on this, over 500 pages, is that right?
Yeah, this is, um...
That stick of...
That's probably one of the biggest things about this plan, is that it's a living document. There's always going to be changes to it, but it really is a framework. It is not, the whole operations plan can kind of be deceiving, but what it does do is delineate the responsibilities of each department within the county, as well as the responsibilities of our planning partners that participated in developing this document. So, when a disaster happens here, it's already delineated. Who's going to do what, what we're going to do, and how we're going to do it. And if we don't have the resources to do it, who are we going to call?
And it's so detailed. It's down to chainsaws, you said?
Yep.
And if we buy more chainsaws, we'd have to change, change that, or if we take away. So, it's very detailed and Bernie's worked very hard on it and Hannah, and so I appreciate what you've done on that.
Thank you very much.
Is there any public comment?
Good morning, Commissioners. Ray Hriska, 235 North Santa Fe. Promulgation, you know, that is, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't that a decree, you know, so that you let the public know about, you know, what you're going to do through a resolution from, you know, for, you know, the county? And my question is, the resolution, it just says whereas, whereas, whereas. I assume that there was going to be a report concerning this the public would have access to. Is that true?
The plan is on the county website under the Emergency Management tab.
Could you repeat that, please?
The plan itself is on the Saline County website under the Emergency Management tab.
And that wasn't in the agenda package today? I didn't, I didn't see anything in there other than...
That the plan itself wasn't in the agenda package?
Right, right.
Well, I think it's 500 pages.
500 pages, it'd be a little hard to put in a package, huh?
Well, does, okay, just because it's an extensive...
It's a lot of pages, yeah.
But it's, it's accessible to the website.
It is.
Well, I was just wanting to know how you could access that, because I think I asked you last week that you said you'd provide a copy of it or something, but apparently it's...
What I was asked last week was if this was going to be adopted by resolution, and that was the information that was, that yes, and that's what this week is.
I think I asked about the actual resolution too. What is the, and the resolution is 15-2176? That's on the website?
The resolution number itself? The resolution number for this is 15-2176.
Okay, and where is that on the website?
The resolution itself is not on the website, and it won't be on the website, I believe, until it's signed and that's uploaded by the clerk's office. We won't put the resolution on the website. The plan itself is on the website.
But the resolution will be in the minutes?
Yes.
So...
So, what's the difference?
I, I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Are you asking that the resolution gets put on the Emergency Management tab? Is that what you're asking?
Well, I'm just wondering where it is, so you can find it, to read it.
The actual 500-page document, is that what you're asking?
I'm assuming that it's under the Emergency Management tab under the Saline County website.
Yes, it is.
Is that correct?
Yes, as well as the 2000, I believe the 2010 plan is still up there right now, too, because we're in that stage of transition.
This is a pretty extensive document, and I was just curious on where you could find it. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other public comment? Bring it back to the commission for further action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt RFA 188-15, the 2015 Emergency Operations Plan for Saline County, as recommended by staff.
I second that. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Passes 5-0. Thank you very much for your hard work. I know that was a long process. Glad to have that over?
Well, it never stops. It never stops.
Yeah, you just keep going. Like you said, it's a living document. It's a living document, so.
I apologize. I know that there is a resolution that was attached to it. I didn't know if we needed to read the resolution and adopt the resolution as well.
That's what I was going to ask, Mr. Chairman. There, I believe there is a resolution on that. I don't know whether Commissioner Larson wanted to amend her motion to approve the RFA as well as the resolution. Do you have the resolutions there to sign, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Resolution 15-2176.
Yes.
Well, maybe we should withdraw this last one and then add that to it.
Or just amend it. Can I just amend it?
You can amend it if you want, if that's your choice.
And amend it to also include resolution number 15-2176.
Now, because we haven't gone through the parliamentarian class, parliamentary class...
Well, it wasn't listed on, even on your agenda here, so I...
Jim still needs to second that, correct?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Second the amendment, and do we need to vote on it again?
Yes.
Okay. Public comment first. And that may be your question.
You're right. And I'm curious about, have, have all the commissioners read this document?
No, I haven't.
So, why are you passing something you haven't read?
The document or the resolution?
I haven't read the 500 pages.
Oh, okay.
That's what I meant.
Right, right.
We're going to do a Nancy Pelosi, I guess, huh?
Have you read it, Ray?
It's not even on the website. I've never even seen one of it.
Yes, it is.
It is. Well, I haven't seen it. I was, the first time I knew about it is even on there.
You're supposed to be our watchdog. You're not watching very well.
We'll read it.
I'm going to have to get a license to do that. Can you give me a license so I can be the watchdog?
Sign up. Let's move back to, back to the commission. All right, there is an amended motion. The amended motion has been seconded. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Item number two, if you're ready, Emergency Management update with, again with Hannah Stanball, the Director of Emergency Management.
This is our Emergency Management update for the months of August and September. We've been pretty busy the last couple of months. We'll start off with some of the different weather events. I don't have a whole heck of a lot to report on those. Just a couple of course pictures always are nice to be able to show you what, what we've been up to. This is a precipitation totals for the month of, after a storm that we had on August the 5th, a severe thunderstorm warning that came through. The storm came through about 3:00 in the morning, so wakes us up out of bed and lets us monitor what is going on. This storm actually formed pretty quickly and moved out of the area pretty quickly, so that was kind of nice. But we did get some, get some pretty good precipitation out of that. Our next severe thunderstorm warning that was issued came on August the 22nd. We did have threats or the potential for large hail and damaging winds. The storm moved through, and we got a picture of some pea-sized hail. That, that was found, probably, I think that was the southern end of Salinas where that picture came from. And we did have reports down in this area of some golf ball-sized hail, but no significant damage was reported to us. The next was on September the 7th. We had a severe thunderstorm warning that came through about 5:30 in the evening. We did have the threats of nickel-sized hail and wind gusts up to 65 miles an hour. This storm actually came through extremely quickly, and this was the same storm that as soon as it passed through Saline County, it gained significant momentum, went through Dickinson County, and they, where they had 100 mile an hour straight-line winds that damaged a house over in Dickinson County. The next one that we had was on September the 10th. It would, the Weather Service had been talking about it, and the Storm Prediction Center had been talking about it for several days, the threat of severe weather. So, we were all ready and all prepared. As soon as everything came through, they put us in a severe thunderstorm watch for that day, but as you know it, the luck ran out and the storm system just completely split on either side of Saline County. So, we received just a little bit of rain out of that, but nothing severe. So, that was a very good thing. So, our average precipitation totals for August of 2015 was 3.89 inches, which is fairly normal for August for our area, and September precipitation totals was 3.73, which is just about an inch over what we normally get. So, so far for the 2015 year, we are ending at 25.52 inches for the whole entire 2015 year, leaving us about, about an inch and a half below normal for precipitation values. They're still talking of a very, the potential of a very strong El Nino event this winter, meaning normal temperatures, but above-average precipitation. We'll see what happens, but they are definitely, I watched the news last night and had a report on just nothing but the whole El Nino stuff. So, we're still in for, trying to figure out what's going to happen, but there is that potential.
You know, that picture, that, could you go back to that last picture?
Yeah.
You know, that's almost artwork.
Yeah.
I think we ought to put that on the wall. I mean, to me, that looks better than the teeth we have out here south of town. That is really nice.
Especially the thumb in the picture, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, well, the little shine in the circle and the, it kind of looks, reminds me of the teeth out there, but they're not rotten teeth. They're good-looking teeth.
Looks like little snowmen to me. Here's a little picture that shows you just the total precipitation for September, for the whole entire state of Kansas. You can see it's pretty darn colorful. The eastern half of the state obviously receives some, but the western half of the state received some pretty good precipitation. Definitely certainly helped with the drought monitor across this whole entire state of Kansas. My last report that we did, we had kind of slipped into that abnormally dry category with the precipitation we've had in August and September. It's gotten us back out where, where we need to be. For our emergency management activities, we've had quite a, quite a bit of things going on. I'm, I'll just kind of skip through some of the highlights, I guess you can say. One of the really cool advantages that I was able to have is I sit on the Kansas Association of Counties Board as the Emergency Management rep for the state of Kansas, and every year they do a, basically kind of like a field trip type of thing. The president of the board chooses a meeting location. The president of the board is from Wyandotte County, so we were, we traveled to Kansas City for our meeting that day. We were given a tour of the Sporting KC Park, the soccer stadium that's over by Legends, which was a phenomenal experience. It's a wonderful facility. Then we had our meeting, as well as got to go to a T-Bones game. So, great fellowship with this board. The, the Keans Association of Counties Board is a phenomenal group of people to work with, and I really enjoy having my position on that board. Great advocates for our counties. The other big thing that I would love to, that I'm going to definitely showcase here is on September the 12th. We held a full-scale exercise out at the Smoky Hill Air National Guard Range. This exercise has been in the plans for over a year, and to have it finally come together was great. We did this on a Saturday morning. The intention was to bring our volunteer first responders to, together with the Air National Guard Range folks, and we did a plane crash scenario. We did, where, it was a plane that was dusting for weeds, I believe. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am. C-130.
Okay. And then it crashed. There were people ejected from the plane. We brought in life team. They actually did a landing on the range to help the patient. So, landing zone stuff. We had live fire. We had a hazardous material spill. There was, it was a really bad day. But the whole intention was to target this exercise towards our volunteer first responders.
How many people participated in that?
Well, this is what I will tell you. We had representation there from every single one of our Saline County Rural Fire Districts, and we have six rural fire districts here. As far as the number of people, I believe...
I would say 100 or so.
Yeah.
It was Salina Fire Department, the Air National Guard, the active duty Title 10 component from McConnell Air Force Base, their readiness folks, which is the military talk for emergency management. And we had Life Star, or...
Life Team.
Life Team actually do an actual landing, package a patient up, take off, fly somewhere else on the range, land, set up another landing zone, land. We exercised all communications interface, multi-jurisdictional capabilities. It was a big deal. They actually had live fire where they burnt some hay bales off to simulate the actual, they had to go actually put the fire out. The Salina hazmat team actually did booming and that kind of stuff in a creek to stop the, the, the agent from the aircraft from leaching into the water supply and that kind of stuff. So, it was, it was a pretty, pretty complicated exercise.
When you ask about how many, a year ago, you had 1,135 out there for a maneuver out there, and...
That was visually clear.
It was, it was big, and it was also kind of, some of it was on the OK range and, and the rest of it was at crisis city.
Right.
Which was extremely large.
That was federally funded.
Right.
This, this was all...
I understand that.
This was all local, didn't really, other than the fuel cost is very much money to put on.
Yep.
But there's something going on there.
Oh, gosh. Where do we want to go here? So, this is a picture we gathered at the El Saline High School in Brookville at 7:30 in the morning. Gave everybody a safety briefing. Obviously, we're going onto a live range. We needed everybody to be safe, and we wanted them to know kind of the basic scenario that they were going to be running through. So, met everybody there, staged all of our equipment, and then our 911 dispatchers were able to facilitate the deployment of these resources like they normally would in a, in a real event. This is one of my favorite pictures that we had. This is all of our equipment on the range, all of the rural, the fire equipment that was there. So, a picture of them all geared up, basically getting a situation assessment on what exactly is going on, and the incident commander facilitating the objectives from there. This is a picture of the Saline County Mounted Patrol. They also participated. There was a search and rescue component of this, so their assets and the resources that they have are a huge advantage for Saline County, and getting them to participate with us was, was wonderful. And it's really important for our volunteer fire guys, as well as the mounted patrol, to be able to work together seamlessly, but then for them each to know what kind of resources they have. So, they brought out their four-wheelers and their quads, and they, they really enjoyed it. They were happy to participate. There's a picture of Salina Fire. This is their hazmat rig that came out. Ah, and the, sorry, picture of landing of life team. It was a little dusty, but this is definitely gives you a really good idea in a rural setting. You've got to set up, set up a landing zone. There's no helicopter pads out in the middle of nowhere, so it gave the rural first responders an opportunity to exercise that. This is a picture of our simulated patient transport to the helicopter itself.
Where's that helicopter stationed at now?
That one is stationed, I believe, at Hutch, Hutchinson.
They have hay also, right?
Yes, I believe that is correct. There's, and there's two different, where we sit in the state, we're kind of split up between the two different medical helicopters.
No, Junction City has one.
Junction City, yes. And that's Life Star, and then the, these folks is Life Team. So, depending on where the actual emergency is at within the county, depends on which helicopter is the closest response.
We used to have one at the airport, but we don't have it anymore.
Yeah, it's been several years since we've had that, several years. But they were so tickle pink that we invited them to come play, and they really enjoyed it. It was, it was a good experience. And then the last step was after everything was done, all the objectives were complete. This is a picture of what we call a hot wash. We bring all the players together, stuff them in a room, and we ask them right after we end this, what went right, what went wrong, and what can we do differently? So, getting the perspective from the actual players, the people that did the work, what could we do better next time? And if this was an actual event, what are some things that we need to be looking at? We definitely identified, identified some, some issues. Some are very small. Some will take a couple of months to complete. Some's going to take maybe a few hundred dollars to purchase some equipment, but for the most part, it was, it was a very good learning experience for everybody.
How long is this session afterwards? How long did you meet?
Usually about 20 minutes. We try to keep it short, sweet, and simple, to the point. And, you know, obviously, they've been there all day already. We don't want to take up too much of their time, but we still want their thoughts and their concerns fresh on their mind. So, this was a huge project that we're very excited that, number one, it's done, but number two, we had a great time doing it. It was a huge success, and we got nothing but compliments from everybody out of it. So, it was a wonderful experience. We will definitely, definitely be doing this again, and we've got some great partners out at the Smoky Hill Farming Range. For our rural fire activities, I'm just going to show you just a couple of things. Fire-wise, it's actually been a fairly decent last couple of months. Some of the bigger things that we had, this is on August the 13th, K-140 in Wyman. This is Fire District Number Three. We had a farm implement that caught fire and also caught some grass on fire. There was also, at the same time, there was also another fire at milepost 239. So, they were dealing with two incidents in their area at the same time. It became just a little bit of a challenge for them, but they did a phenomenal job with getting that, that under control. This is a picture of milepost 241, and this was a semi-truck fire on August the 30th. This is on August the 24th in the 2,700 block of North Fifth Street. This was a whole group of hay bales that were caught fire. After they looked at the situation, did investigation with the sheriff's office, they did determine that it was arson. So, there was about, I believe there was about anywhere from 15 to 20 hay bales that was burnt up in this. And for anybody that knows hay bales burn a very, very long time, especially even that many of it, Fire District Number Seven were, they were on scene. I believe the call came out at like 7:00 in the evening. They were on scene till probably about 3:00 in the morning, and it still was burning after that. And that's a thing that you just have to cherish the responders that we have here. They're all volunteers. They all still had to get up for work the next morning, even after being out at 3:00 in the morning, so.
And we had the one right behind Presbyterian Manor. You know, we had a, we took a truck or a crane or loader and broke them bales up, and they, and they burn a whole lot faster to get it over.
That's exactly what they did here, too. In that picture, you can see one of the loaders that was on scene.
Usually, usually the county moves on that, don't they?
It depends. If we can find a resource that's fairly local, and that's another huge benefit is the community that we have, and with the connections that our fire guys have, sometimes they're able to call up a local farmer, a local resident, or a neighbor that might be a little bit closer, and ask them to come out there. And we've never had any issues with anybody telling us no, but then our fallback, too, is that if we really need something, we'll call County Road and Bridge and see if they can have somebody respond out there.
They did that one out there. I know that they moved very fast, and it went very quickly. That house would not be behind Presbyterian Manor if it wasn't for them moving so fast.
You are correct. You are correct. Here's a, there's a better picture of their loader getting all those hay bales broke up. But when all of them are on fire, it definitely takes, takes a long time for them to, to get that done. We're very fortunate. This was actually up north of town, so, long night for them. This is just a picture of just some of the activities that, you know, it's not all about fighting fires. It's about keeping your equipment up and running, too. And the requirements that our fire trucks have, one of them is hose testing. They have to do this annually, and this is Saline County Fire District Number Five in the north-east portion of the county. This is our quint, because we're awfully proud of this piece of apparatus. But to kind of give you an idea of what hose testing is, it means taking every single last piece of hose off of every single fire truck, putting it together, running water through it, and finding out if it works or not. Because it's much simpler to do it now, when nothing's going on, than when you've got a huge house fire and you find out that your hose is broken, you can't utilize it. So, once again, it's not all about fires. There's certain things that they have to do to keep everything up and running. So, our call totals that we have for August, we had 19 calls, 19 fire calls, and for September, we had 12 calls. So, really, subject to any of the questions that you guys might have about the activities that have gone on, that's all I have for my report.
You didn't mention there was a bonfire call the other night.
Mm-hmm.
Do you need a permit to have a bonfire in the county? Is that correct?
You do. You have to have special permission for any type of after-dark fire. What that entails is contacting our office. We prefer to have at least a couple of days ahead-of-time notice, because what we do is we contact the rural fire chief. We just want to make sure the rural fire chief, number one, doesn't have any issues with it. We do have some of our fire chiefs that do like to go out and inspect it, making sure that we're not going to be throwing any tires, telephone poles, railroad ties into a bonfire. And as long as the chief says that they're okay with it, we issue the burn permit. That permit is only good for a 24-hour period. You're still required to follow the same rules. Wind speeds have to be 15 mile an hour or below, and you still have to call in before you light it.
Now, what exactly is a bonfire? How big does it take to be a, if you're having a little weenie roast, is that a bonfire?
Technically, if you're using it for cooking or ceremonial purposes, you do not need a permit. We still encourage it because our permits are free, and if anything, it certainly saves a phone call from your neighbors to the police department that somebody else's house is on fire. When we talk about the differences between like a bonfire and a campfire, if you think of a campfire where you're going to be roasting hot dogs or something, you really don't need a permit. Bonfires are much bigger in a open area, not in any type of containment, usually outside, well, always outside.
So, if you have a little camp area with cement blocks around it, and you're cooking weenies there, you don't have to worry about it on that?
That's correct.
Okay. I thought that'd be good information for the public to know that.
Yep. And this time of year is very popular for bonfires. We've already, I think we've already issued probably three or four bonfire permits already, just for this month, so.
Is there a fee?
Is there a fee to those permits?
Yep.
They just have to arrange to your office.
Just have to contact us, that's it.
I usually, I usually call in, even though I'm doing the roasting on the pond out there.
It's just one of those things. If it's just a simple phone call, just... It's just one of those things, if it's just a simple phone call just to mitigate.
Right. It can save an emergency response. We had one not too terribly long ago where it was, I believe, illegal burning behind a house in the middle of the night, 3:00 in the morning. And a deputy with a brand-new Explorer struck a cow and killed a cow up by Brookville and damaged the vehicle in response to what they thought was a house fire. So, I mean, this is, this is, this is the big leagues. I mean, we have to know what's going on.
Okay, that's good information.
Further questions or comments? Is there any public comment or questions?
Ray Russ got 235 North Santa Fe. I've got a quick note here for the future. Since its previous resolution that you guys just approved was 500 pages long and the reason it was not in the agenda was the size, perhaps the county could have put a hyperlink in the agenda packet to the document. I think, and I didn't see it or I didn't know it was there, so I'm just...
That's a good point. Good point, thank you. Further public comment?
Yeah, Norman Mano Slin. Hannah, when you're fighting these fires and you have this equipment, is that private individuals' equipment that helps move these bales that are on fire?
Sometimes it is, yes. If it's the property owners.
Are we exposing the county to a liability, a lawsuit if some damage has happened? I have seen damage at private fires where the tractor burned up and the county has to pay for the equipment. It's something to look forward to in the future.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you very much for your report, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Move on to item number three.
Request for Action 154-15. And Amendment 41 to Resolution Number 1254, Board Term Limits.
My understanding is we needed to remove this for consideration?
Correct. Mr. Chairman, I move to remove RFA 154-15 and Amendment 41 to Resolution 1254 from the table for consideration and possible action today.
I second that.
It's motion and second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes 5-0.
Okay, and we have staff report by David Neal, planning and zoning director now.
Morning Commissioners. This is an amendment to the zoning code to change term limits for the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals. Back in, the commission had asked for this originally. It went to a public hearing May 4th with a five-to-one vote on the Planning Commission to recommend denying the term limits. The vote was tabled by the commission until we corrected some voting requirements in our code. That has been done, so we've gone from unanimous votes to a two-thirds vote. And the term limits that are being set, and I think this is pretty standard across the county boards. It's a, two terms of three years apiece, and then you would take a one-year break. During that one-year break, obviously, you can go serve on other boards. You can serve on multiple boards at the same time, at least typically. Before you discuss this and before you make a motion, I did notice a typo in my resolution. I had not placed the Planning Commission vote on the resolution, so you should have the correct resolution in front of you to sign.
In front of the chair? I had five at my place.
That's it.
This is the correction?
Yep, if you'll pass that down. I don't want to publish that without having the correct vote in there and the correct language.
What was the correction again, David?
I always put a hashtag when I put in the vote when I write those resolutions.
Oh, okay.
And I had not placed in the vote of five-to-one with one abstaining. And for this, you'll have to open it up to the public and make a vote. Because the Planning Commission did recommend denial of this, it will take a two-thirds vote to overturn that. That would be four votes of the commission. If you would like to agree with the Planning Commission, which is to reject the term limits, it would take a majority vote, which is three votes of the commission. And then any other action would also take a majority vote.
Okay, questions of staff before I open it up to public comment?
Well, as I had voted before, I won't vote against this term limits because I think it should be longer. Like three, three-year terms.
Is there any public comment on this issue? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for further comments or action.
Just have a quick question in respect to Commissioner Smith's concern. Can it be brought up, or when can it be brought up again to change it? If a future commission, or next year, or in four years, they decide that the term limits do need to be, are in favor of term limits, but they need to be a little bit longer?
I look at, you have two options. One, and this would take a majority vote today, you could ask to return this to the Planning Commission. We would have to re-advertise for a public hearing and hold the hearing based on three term limits. If I'm getting that right, three term limits of three years instead of two terms for three years. So that the public would have another chance for a formal public hearing. And then it would come back to you with the changed language. Or if you approve this today, zoning actions cannot be repeated for one year unless they are substantially different. And when you're talking term limits, there's not substantial difference.
Okay, all right, I'm comfortable with that. And then as you mentioned, once you go off, you're allowed one year off. And then you can reapply to be back on.
Correct. And for example, you could serve on the health board for a couple of years.
And just because you're not on the board does not mean you can't come to the meetings.
Please come to the meetings?
Correct, correct.
Always like the public to come?
Just to, just to keep the momentum to see what's happening. And then after you've set out your year, then you can reapply for, to be asked back on the board for a three-year term.
Right. And anybody that's not on the board, I'm more than happy to recommend other boards that have vacancies if they're interested in serving the county in another way.
Okay, I'm happy with that.
And Commissioners are welcome to come to those meetings also.
Sure. Well, I'll just say, excuse me, Commissioner, I apologize, go ahead.
Well, the first problem, we really had a problem because we went from three to five Commissioners. And we have that straightened out now. So we were brought back on the table. I still feel comfortable with the two-to-three-year terms. And with one year off and that they could still serve on another board. And I feel that that's the motion I'd like to make.
Yeah.
And I haven't changed my mind either. I still do not like overturning Planning Commission. I mean, I understand that they work hard for what they do. But I still do believe that we need more people involved in government. And I still think there's a perception that it's hard to get on the board. And I think we'll see more people that are interested in being part of this. So I still like the term limits.
I think we're all in agreeance of the term limits. I just think Commissioner Smith wanted it longer. Because he feels that there is more of a learning curve by extending them for longer.
In another year, they can come back.
Exactly. That's what I wanted to clarify and make sure I understand, and I'm comfortable with that.
Commissioner?
Yes, I made that, but new Commissioners coming on could come back and have, and make a change on that. Yes, but that was my motion that we... And it will take a four-to-one vote for that to pass.
And I'll second that.
There is a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Passes four to one.
Before we start the next topic for you, just a public service announcement. Anybody out there, we will have two Commissioners that will end up expired terms. So anybody out there, whether it's the Planning Commission or another board, please fill out some expression of interest forms. Get them into our offices. I believe the form is online. I would expect somewhere January or February that we should probably talk about filling what will be two empty spaces in March.
Very good.
And is there, there's a county-city percentage on that, is that correct?
Correct. The majority of both the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals have to be county residents, unincorporated communities.
So both can apply, but it could possibly be that if it's county people coming off, it could have to be county coming back in.
Correct. At this point, I think we are right at the 5-4 balance. But like I said, there are other boards out there. More than happy to get all the help we can.
Great. Thank you very much. Move on to item number four.
Planning Zoning Monthly Update, again, Mr. David Neal.
Morning again. Going through the monthly permit activity. Over the year, I like to keep track of what I did this year based on last year to see. And I always average out somewhere around 100 permits in a year. This year, we're a little bit low. We're about 18 permits behind year-to-date. I'm going to blame that for the heavy, heavy spring rains. When you look at the next chart, you'll see the second quarter was really low compared to some of the other years. And that's typically spring, summer, and getting into fall, that's when we do the most. We just skip out harvest season. But 18 permits down really isn't that bad. The commercial permits that we've been looking at, Central Plains Diesel just finished up their expansion of their shop. So they've got, I want to say it was three bays that they can do some extra work. St. Francis, if you haven't been out there, they recently completed their addition. It's an amazing building out there. It's got some good fire protection features out there to help out, and they do a lot of good work. The other day, I drove by the Christ the Lord Church. The building is up, so they're just finishing up some of the interior work. They should be done pretty soon. And new one coming on, GeoProbe has taken over the old school specialty supply building. And at this point, they're just rearranging the access doors and ADA access so that it's a usable building for them. And then they'll start to make some other changes as they expand. For the planning activity, it's pretty stable, do about the same every year. We just finished the airport amendment last month, and we just finished this text amendment that'll get published soon. The next meeting is not scheduled until December. We'll have a case there for a home occupation mechanic. For violations, the 1849 West North Street, the contract was signed. Last time I went out there last week, pretty much everything is off the property except for the mobile home. And I don't believe the contractor has started working on the mobile home or cleared the other work. So it's just slowly moving off. The kennel out at 5310 North Homes, that one has been cleared. They've met all the conditions of the use permit, so they're up and operating. There's one, we've been working on this, and this is more, it's not about the case out on Centennial with the flood permit. It's more about flood permits in general. FEMA has hired a new contractor to review their letter of map changes, LOMAs and LOMRs, whether you fill or how you get the property removed. And we've been having this, it's not just Celine County, it's statewide. Anytime you get a new contractor, they do everything absolutely by the book. They don't have the old information that the old contractors had. And with us, it's a particular problem because we're going through new map updates. And these maps are not officially at the preliminary stage, so they're not in the hands of these contractors. Fortunately, we have really good people that work for the State Division of Water Resources. They've been getting a lot of this straightened out. So as they work on it and as I help out the surveyors and property owners, we're getting back to a regular, smooth operation. This one took a little extra work, but we should have our approvals coming in pretty soon. But the goal between both us and the state is to get this back to running smooth. It's just, it's bureaucracy. You have to get the information out to everybody and get it back to running normal. And then the last one we had was a septic tank collapse out at 4720 West Pleasant Hill Road. There's a new owner on that property and they are getting the septic tank replaced. So that one will be all cleared. For environmental health activities, it's been actually fairly busy in the last quarter. This is usually when we do most work for the environmental side, doing septic tanks and things like that. Looking at the permits by type, we still do mostly septic tanks. We prefer septic over lagoon. It's a lot less as far as maintenance and keeping it working right. Lagoons, you end up having to mow, you have to maintain a lot of the parts in there. Permits by the county, Celine County, we have the highest population, so we tend to do the most permits out of the four counties we serve. I had promised a while ago, we have just started working on the policies and started talking about it, trying to figure out how we can write up the policies to make all this environmental work run smoothly. We had talked about the real estate transactions. We had talked about building permit inspections. So working with my team, we're going to start figuring out the policies, get it all worked out. I'm working on the easy stuff first, knock out as much of the easy stuff as I can. The hardest one is going to be that real estate deal because there's a lot of players and a lot of processes going on between buying houses and what we need to get done. It'll take some time, but we have started working on that. And as we get into winter, it slows down so we can work faster on it. For care grant activities, we talked a little bit about this this morning. We've done, at last count, 97 of the healthy home inspections where our goal is 100. I expect in the next year, we'll easily be able to surpass that. We still have radon tests. For anybody out there that wants a radon test, we will get those things and get your house tested. We've done 637 homes total. And when you look at the National Map, Kansas is a little bit on the high side for radon. And when you get towards the southwest of the United States, it's a little lower. So it is something you should be aware of and have tested. And then so far, we've mitigated seven houses out of the 17 people that have applied. And I've got a couple more applications coming in, so we'll keep trying to get as many houses as we can mitigated. And the last part, the other things going on, went to the Floodplane Conference last month. A lot of what they focused on there, and it's a lot of what you've been dealing with here, is the understanding the risk as a property owner. And you've been working with Hannah with more than just floods, but that was a big part of her plans. And trying to communicate to the public that the risk involved with floodplanes. Big statistic there, if you have a 30-year mortgage and you're in a floodplain, there is a 99% chance that that house will be flooded over the life of the mortgage. And when you look at flood damage, it typically causes more damage than any of the other natural disasters that we have. Granted, in some cases, when you're talking Florida, it's coming from one natural disaster like a hurricane that caused the flooding. Good example right now, South Carolina going through intensive rains from their mix of normal rain and a hurricane coming through. We've seen the news and how that's affecting them. And it's just things I want people to be aware of, that there is some risk. It's not just the property owners. You're also talking your rural fire departments that have to respond to them. They have to go out in boats and that, any kind of water rescue does get hazardous really fast. And then coming up next week, I'll be going to a planning conference. This is a four-state conference, so I'm hoping I can talk to some other people and see how they handle things in Arkansas and Oklahoma and see if I get any good ideas out there. That's all I have for you.
Questions, comments?
Just a question on that one, on Centennial. You talked about the, how's that going?
The Garber surveying is doing the survey work out there. And they have to, they've got the survey done. It's getting this new contractor to agree that the flood elevation is correct.
Okay.
And...
Just wondering on the septic system and everything, how that was working out on that?
As far as we know, everything is right there. It's just getting this survey so that it meets all the requirements.
Because he had all of that in what was originally in the floodplain.
Right. And now that we've sent the information out there, working with the state, it should be passed with no problem.
And these floodplanes, it's pretty hard to set a map up. I mean, you take an area, there might be a bump in the ground where it raises four or five feet. And it's actually higher than a neighbor over here by two feet that's out of the floodplain. Yet you can't build because the map shows you're in a floodplain. So what do you do? Do you hire a surveyor then to bring that up?
That's exactly it. Because the maps that we're working on today, and I can go into a little more detail for you, that was part of the conference, they're going to be a lot more accurate. But it's done through, the new maps will be done through LiDAR and through different equipment. The old maps were done off of old surveys. There could be a 10-foot margin of error. They don't know your land. Like you said, this spot could be here and that.
But with GPS, can they kind of do that now?
That's what we're doing now.
So technology's different.
Right. You got it exactly right. If I see that there's a high spot or you're telling me there's a high spot, I'm going to recommend you hire a surveyor. They can survey it and find that that ground is naturally above the flood elevation. We file it with FEMA and it gets approved.
Which to those people, they get a little aggravated because they have to spend money for a surveyor when they know their land is high. But that's what, and when this new, when do you think that new mapping will be? this new, when do you think that new mapping will be done?
I keep pushing, there are a lot of things going into it, the city has to get the levy recertified, there's some extra engineering that has to go, I'm not sure where the levy certification's at right now. Once that's done, it's not just Saline County, it is the entire, all the cities, everything else. And they do a lot more focused engineering where higher populations are, so they're going to look a little bit more at this area, a little bit more, a lot more at Salina, and that has to get done first. I wish I could give you a date, every time I get a date from the state, it just keeps getting pushed off.
Looks like there could be a, some kind of a little tiny box about that big you could take out and set it on the property, and it would tell you the exact elevation of my words.
That would be nice.
Is there something like that?
You know, the GIS over...
Unfortunately, without a registered surveyor.
Yeah.
That's, because a lot of tractors have GPS in them now, and that's what a lot of people will tell me, I'll give them a flood elevation, and they can take that GPS and say, "Well, I'm right about here." And if you're four feet off, I'm going to tell you, you might not want to hire a survey, it's your risk.
Yeah.
You know, I'll take what I get. But if you're within a foot, you might want to hire a surveyor.
You know that, what they do over here, what Drew and those guys do, you can see how much difference there is in what it was 25 years ago as today, those, a lot of those places don't show a flood problem.
And that's just it, the new, like I said, the old mapping, you have to take the rainfall events, so they take a history of rainfall, they take history of flooding in the rivers, we have more accurate information there. The last, I don't remember the years without looking at my papers, the last rainfall study was, I want to say, in the 60s, so they're having a new one that's made, so that will be more accurate. Unfortunately, that tends to raise the water levels. But what lowers it is the topography. It used to be a 10-foot margin of error on the surveys that we had. Now we're at about a one-foot margin of error because of...
That's a huge difference.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And so I can use the maps that we have today, and I can show where I think the ground is out. Today, technically, you're still in, so you have to hire a surveyor, but I can show you, I'm going to be 90% sure that a surveyor will find that you can remove that from the floodplain today.
Erosion has had a lot to do with that.
And how often will they be updating these? Because if it's another, if it's a live document, it's constantly changing, every year is a different year.
The floodplain map itself, the total engineering that we're going through today, that doesn't happen very often.
Okay.
Our maps right now are from 1986.
Okay.
There was an attempt in 2007, but there were a lot of errors in the, in the surveying and engineering that went on there. I'm glad, because now we're getting a better product.
Good.
Well, with your satellite GPS, I have a GPS that's probably 12, 13 years old in my aircraft, and it'll tell me it's a, two different feet from this start of the runway to this end of the runway, it's that accurate.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, when you're flying, you need to know where your elevation is for towers and everything, and so the technology's there, I don't know why they don't use it.
They want a registered surveyor.
I say, yeah, and that's, and FEMA wants this, and everybody wants that, and that's why the taxpayers are paying out so much money, and it's so inconvenient to, there's people out there right now that want to build sheds that can't do it because they've got to get this straightened out, and they don't want to spend the money, and we're losing tax dollars over, you know, so it's just too much government, that's, that's why I was against FEMA, we have to do these things in order to keep our FEMA.
Right, we get the, residents get flood insurance, there's some other benefits.
And that's why I made that choice on FEMA, too much government control, so, but anyway.
All right, any other public, or any comments from the staff, for the staff? Any public comment?
Yeah, I had one comment for David about the, you kind of glossed over the issue about everything's in order over the dog kennel out, you know, the Bob and Bonnie George Dog Kennel?
Right.
Could you, could you go into a little bit more detail about what happened and what's going on with that, or what occurred?
The, with the kennel, the conditional use permit was approved, there's a list of conditions that need to be met. The biggest ones, making sure that it was under 30 adult dogs, and went out there and inspected, that, that's done. And the biggest part of it, the Planning Commission at the time made the motion that it should have a hobby breeder's license, which is a license from the state. The hobby breeder's license will restrict you to the sale of no more than 29 animals in a year. And looking at that, we were working with the options and working with the attorneys on the options for this, that motion was not listed as a condition to the property, it was just part of the motion. My direction at the time was we should take it back to the Planning Commission, since they made the motion, they should correct that motion. Having the attorneys talk it out, it was deemed okay to do this administratively, so we administratively made the choice that as long as they are state-licensed, which they are, it's been approved.
So they can, when you say, and I understand, I was here when they had that meeting, and it was pretty interesting, and the Georges were sitting over there, and they said, "We'll agree to these 30," or whatever the amount of number of dogs was.
Right.
Adult dogs. So in other words, that doesn't count puppies on the property.
Right.
So they've kind of, they're kind of happy with what the change, what's happened now then, or they seem pretty happy?
I won't say they're happy with me, because anytime you're enforcing regulations...
Yeah, but I mean, the regulations came out, what was kind of agreed on to start with at that meeting.
Right, that's what ends up happening, if we got what we needed to make sure that this is manageable.
But I mean, they can have 30 adult dogs now, is that correct?
Correct.
And that, those adult dogs could have two or three puppies?
Depends how many times you breed, and how many, how many times per year you breed, different people will do different things.
How, how do you know what, when does a dog become an adult? What age?
Five weeks.
Don't quote me on this, because I'm not reading the regulations, I'm going, I would go with the state definition, which I believe is six months.
Okay, that's a good, good answer and a good question, I think, because I don't know.
They usually sell them when they're like five weeks old.
My dog's more than six months and is not an adult.
What if, what if, what if they're retarded, what if they're retarded and they really never become of age?
Slow.
You know?
I'm sorry, I digressed.
Thank you for that.
So David, the, the file is actually closed now as far as you're concerned, as far as...
Correct.
Everything is done and taken care of?
Correct.
Okay, well, thank you for your help.
But they did go from like 100 and some dogs, adult dogs, down to the requirement that you had said that night.
Right, the Planning Commission was looking at having a manageable operation, and that's what's been accomplished.
And that was what the agreement was to start with way back when they started it.
Right.
So we're just kind of continuing on the same agreement.
All right, thank you, any further public comment?
Judy Larson, 715 North 9th. I personally see FEMA not as something that we, that taxpayers are stuck with, but rather FEMA is taking the taxes we have paid and using them for our benefit, coming back to us.
I should make a correction, FEMA does not collect taxes.
No. But they use the government, the taxes we pay.
It, this is kind of awkward, I'm going to give you the theoretical way FEMA works, and well, how the federal government steps in. FEMA runs the insurance for all flood, and that's because no insurance company is going to insure flood risk, it's that hazardous, going back to trying to make people aware of the flood risk. And I look at my job as the flood risk. FEMA should be taking all of this insurance from Kansas, from Arizona, from South Carolina, from New York, wherever. And then when Hurricane Katrina, Hurricane Sandy, whatever comes through, the floods on the Mississippi River, they use that money to help the residents of that area recover. Unfortunately, sometimes we get these giant disasters like Katrina, they need a little extra help. Congress loans them the money, so that's where your taxes are coming in, but remember it is a loan to FEMA. And if you're in New Orleans, you are grateful for that recovery. We can all argue the politics of that later, but you're grateful if it's you. Unfortunately, FEMA has to pay back that loan. They do not make enough on the insurance to make it one reasonable insurance to also pay back Congress. Congress could do things, and this is up to you, talking to your legislators, this is out-of-county business now, I'm sorry. They can forgive the loans which may help FEMA, I, you know, but then you're forgiving how much in taxes. Work like this mapping is not included in that insurance rate, that comes from Congress, that's something FEMA has to pay back. So FEMA acts more like a private business that's backed by Congress.
Thank you.
It's a good lesson?
Good explanation.
Yeah.
Very good.
There are a lot of politics involved with any federal agency, but that's...
Very good. Well, thank you for your staff report, and...
But if you pay insurance, it still affects you, right? I mean, if you're paying out insurance, it's going to affect, no matter where you live.
Well, how are you paying for insurance that doesn't exist, because you just mentioned that there is no insurance that will cover?
Private companies.
No, private companies, State Farm, or any...
Oh, gotcha, okay, okay.
Nobody would want to take that amount of risk, it is that...
Correct.
If your house is basically guaranteed to flood in the life of a mortgage, would you want to insure that risk?
Yeah, no, I understand that.
That's why, that's why the federal government steps in to help there.
But yet, a home gets washed out and flooded out, they can come right back and build it again in the same spot, because FEMA will guarantee this, I don't, you know, that...
Provide you build to the correct codes, we hope.
But they, yeah, well, codes, but still, but doesn't mean the hurricane isn't going to blow it out again.
Moving on to item number five.
Approval of county commission minutes for October 6, 2015.
Is there any public comment first? Seeing none, bring it back to the commission fraction.
I'm, we accept the county commission minutes of October 6, 2016, as presented.
2015, yes, okay, and is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, and that passes 5-0. Is there any other business that needs to come for the commission today? Under announcements, we will reconvene five minutes after the end of this meeting upstairs for meeting number three.
Just a very short quote from James Madison, said, "Before man can be considered as a member of civil society, he must be considered as a subject of the governor of the universe."
Thank you, is there a motion to adjourn?
I got a finger up out there for some reason.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think I pointed this out to you previously, you moved over into other business, which is an agenda item. Commissioner Smith has repeatedly, every week, made comments. I have no objection to that, but I think that the public should have a right to make comments then, at that time, too.
All right, thank you.
Yes. I, I would just have an announcement. Somebody asked me about why I was wearing pink, and I think it's cancer awareness, Smith, and so...
Breast cancer.
Breast cancer, and so I thought maybe I'd say that, because I didn't know it until I just happened to think about it, and I thought I'd say, "Well, that's why I'm wearing pink." Gotcha. So I hope that'd be any better than that.
That's right, that's right. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned, we'll meet...
How many of these do we need?